Hello, electronic security and life safety professionals. I'm Merlin Gilbo, CEO of the Electronic Security Association. Today, I'm joined by our chairman, John Loud, President of Loud Security Systems, as we bring to you the 2022 ESA Town Hall Virtual Event. We have members from across the country joining us to get updates on the industry and the association.
Welcome to our Town Hall meeting. I think you're going to find a riveted, fast-moving hour. We've got lots of updates that Merlin mentioned. And please stay tuned also with Mr. Michael Barnes, with Barnes &amp; Associates. That's going to give us a great industry update towards the end. Please have a heads up also, our ESA staff is on right now, listening in the chat section. So any questions you've got, would be happy to help you right away with any of those answers and guidance. As some of you were there back in Fort Worth when I was sworn in as Chairman of ESA, I talked a lot about offering a seat at the table, and I talked about Together We Can. And today, I hope you're going to find an opportunity to get engaged with ESA with some of these announcements coming up, so that we can offer you a seat at the table. One of the areas that I want to highlight and talk about is the EMP program. As many of you know, I was a flight attendant with Delta, had never had an alarm system installed in my home, didn't know how any of this worked. But by becoming part of an organization that has an EMP program, which to me, is kind of like having my own Board of Directors, all spread across the nation, within the industry, with the challenges that we face, whether it's challenges or opportunities, from workforce to how do I get new customers, to get insight, to be able to bring that back to my company, my culture, my community, to see what that can do. And throughout my 27-plus years, being part of an organization and an insight like EMP, I've been able to grow my company where we are today. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to the leader of the EMP program this year, Scott Hightower over in Georgia, and also to my good friend Steve Firestone over in Charleston, South Carolina.
Hey, thanks, John. Really appreciate it. Scott Hightower and I are very excited to bring the audience up to date on kind of the evolution of the Executive Management Professionals Group, how it came into existence, and some really fantastic news about where we are today. It was maybe 10 years ago, as I got involved in ESA to the level that I have been over the last decade or so, that I kept coming back from board meetings, advisory group meetings, industry events, and going back to my team at the company that I was running at the time. And I kept saying, hey, you need to talk to this guy, or you need to go meet this guy, or, oh my gosh, you should see what Jamie's doing on the West Coast. And it was a wide variety of subjects. And it was over a couple of months that, that we had those conversations internally. And then I sat at a meeting at one of the ESA ESX events in the 2013-2014 range. And there was a meeting of the Executive Management Professionals Group, and I didn't know what it was. And I went into the room, and it was a group of 20 or so people. And we were sitting around a table, and it was kind of free-flowing, and we were just chatting, and came to the conclusion that there were a bunch of new faces at that meeting. And there were a bunch of people that used to come to those meetings that didn't come anymore. And it was, I think largely because there wasn't any real structure to what was EMP. So I spent a little bit of time thinking about how to, how to structure it in a more formal way, so that people that were involved would get, would get value. And we ended up structuring it so that what is now the EMP group consists of small groups that, that are five, six, seven people in the small groups. And those small groups actually become almost a Board of Directors or an ad hoc advisory group, where there is sharing of information about the challenges that the individual small group members have with each other. And those groups meet on a regular basis, and Scott can talk to you about what, what is going on today. But then in addition to those small groups, there were, at the time, when we had Leadership Summit, it was twice a year that we would get everybody who was involved in the EMP group together at a national level, and bring in renowned speakers, if you will, either from the industry or from outside the industry, on topics that would be relevant to everybody who is running a business or their direct reports in running a business. And as the years evolved, we became a little bit more refined on how we allowed participation, who should be involved, how frequently were the groups meeting, what were the subjects that were discussed. But I have to tell you, as an ESA member, the EMP involvement is a real game changer for anybody who is either running a business or people that are reporting to them, because we're all facing the same challenges. Many in the audience have probably heard of Young Presidents Organization, or Vistage, or one of those national associations of peer groups at a, at a C-suite level. But those are in different industries. This is all about sharing best practices on a professional level or on a personal level with people that are facing the same challenges you have. So as the years evolved, and, and we got different leadership involved in, in being Chair of the EMP group, it has really caught on and gained incredible momentum. And I think the association is very fortunate to have Scott chairing that group today. And I am thrilled to death that we are where we are. And I, my urging to anybody watching this is, it costs nothing. Your participation, not only will you be able to contribute to what everybody else is facing as challenges and opportunities, but just by listening, it's going to significantly change you feeling alone at the top, as they say. So my encouragement would be to, to get involved immediately. And what a great segue to turn it over to, to Scott, who's Chair of the, the group right now. So Scott, why don't you bring everybody up to speed on where we are today?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. And thank you for all of your leadership and encouragement of EMP over the years. I don't think the program would be where it is without, you know, your guidance and vision for it. So, you know, just to echo what Steve's been saying, I mean, we're really excited about the program. I'm very excited to be the Chair this year, and looking forward to continuing to grow the program. As a, as an owner of an integration company, and someone who's participated in the program, I can tell you from firsthand experience how valuable it's been. You know, we've all had instances where we'll go to a trade show, a conference, we'll go to ESX and, you know, pass somebody in the hallway and say, oh, let's catch up later, I've got some questions. And, you know, how are you handling hiring, or how are you handling, you know, this issue or that issue? And so what's great about this program is that really formalizes it. You know, Steve mentioned, in the small groups that you can meet with regularly to bounce those ideas, or to work through issues that are challenging. So we'll be meeting monthly, the groups will. And what we're trying to do is do a couple of meetings in person every year. So we're going to get together at ESX in 2023. But the rest of the calls are typically a video call, a Zoom call, or Teams call. And so it offers a lot of flexibility, in that you don't have to travel to take advantage of it. As Steve mentioned, this is one of the amazing benefits of being an ESA member. There's no extra cost for it. You can get into a group, it's a small group, as Steve mentioned, five, six, seven people, get to know your group, you know, build that trust, and talk about anything that you want to learn about in your business. So we're definitely excited about it, and looking for new members to continue to grow the program. If you are interested in learning more, there's a webpage on the ESA website, and you can go there and get information. And also just fill out an application, which is providing information about you, which really helps us as we put the groups together. Get to know a little bit about you, your company size, where you're located, and so on. But great opportunities for the program. Like I said, we're putting together some new groups now. We're definitely planning to get together in person at the next ESX show, and we want you to be part of it. So definitely let us know if you're interested. And I'm really excited about the program, because I think it's a great opportunity for everyone who's involved.
And Scott, it's, I know when we first started the program way back then, it was exclusively for CEOs or presidents of companies. And, and we found, as the years progressed, that there were frequently requests, hey, can I bring my ops guy? Hey, can I bring my sales guy? Because there's so much valuable information that's exchanged in person and on the calls that take place on a monthly basis. And it is now the structure, I think, where we are today, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it is the CEO or president and any of their direct reports. Because there's some times that subjects are discussed that are, are really kind of personal, proprietary, executive leadership, banking relationships, those kinds of, should I sell my business? Should I do acquisitions? And what I do about this employee that I got a problem with? And we want to have a kind of a peer-to-peer kind of conversation. But having the direct reports of the owners, operators, or CEO presidents kind of brings the value of EMP down one level. And I think that was a good move from a couple of years ago.
Yes, yeah, you're exactly right. It's a great point. It is company, you know, like I said, presidents or CEOs and their direct reports. So just as you mentioned, we're trying to keep it at a fairly senior level, so we can have those broad, you know, strategic discussions. But yes, I agree, having that, that one level down really makes the conversations very rich and rewarding. So, but yeah, it's a, it's a great program for all of the people at those levels. And I think can really benefit them in terms of, you know, trying to grow and continue to grow their companies.
And, and John, I know you say this all the time, it's free, and we really should charge like $1,000 a month for this, but we're not. It's an added benefit for your ESA membership. And if you're watching this, man, you ought to take advantage of it. It is a tremendous resource to the leaders of organizations. So Scott, unless you have anything else, let's send it back to John.
I'm good. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you, Scott. I tell you what, that program is one of those where we've talked about Together We Can, and my example of not knowing what I'm doing, but that group has been so instrumental. I hope that that's inspired many of you out there today to, to reach out to the ESA staff and find out how you can sign up to become part of one of those, those groups and one of, part of that program. But what I'd like to do is celebrate our membership for just a minute. I want to turn things over to Jillian, who's going to give us an update on all of our membership activities and some incredible numbers.
Thank you, John. We're really excited in the ESA Membership Department, led by Sofia Dominguez. In the past three years, I have to say, we have had some incredible new members in the integrator category. We've seen some pretty impressive growth there, as we look to bring in new companies from coast to coast into the ESA community. Whether that portfolio include residential or commercial, security primarily or fire, we've had some really cool new companies come into the ESA community, and that's something we're really excited to talk about. Next year is ESA's 75th anniversary. Having an association that serves our channel for 75 years, that's a, a pretty big deal.
That's incredible.
We hang our hat on being the largest and longest-standing association serving the electronic security and life safety space. And for our 75th anniversary, we are looking to bring in new record-breaking numbers of members. And one way that we look to do this is through the membership campaign, which was John's idea he brought to the association. So there is no better testimonial than that of a member, than that of an owner-operator, running their own security company, and their testimony as to how they use ESA benefits. You know, whether that be the EMP group you just talked about, or our National Training School training, and the discounts they receive there, or on business insurance, ESA has a huge impact on our member companies. And when owner-operators of members' companies speak up and talk about those benefits and how it impacts their day-to-day and their business, it means something. So I'd like you, actually, to talk a little bit about the membership campaign, and, and your passion for it will certainly come through.
Well, Jillian knows, hey, we're going to have a blast. We want to see about, many of you guys out there today that are listening, become volunteers for our 75th anniversary celebration of a membership campaign drive. So there's going to be prizes and awards of all different magnitude. But the main prize you want to go after is to be able to make it to an all-inclusive Caribbean trip that we're going to have in September of 2023. So I hope that you earn your way on that membership campaign drive victory celebration, and hit the goals that we're going to set. We do want to invite each and every one of you to get involved with the membership campaign. We're going to have three dates coming up, that we're going to show you right now, that we kind of do a training session as to what this is all about. And we realize, as security dealers, I work with a lot of other integrators around the country. I work with a lot of associate members. So at times, you're going to find, as a dealer, I'm going to be able to invite and include and welcome others to become members and look into ESA somewhat. But for a lot of the manufacturers and associate members we currently have, you work with a lot of dealers, the folks that have monitoring centers. You have hundreds of dealers. And I'd love to see us all kind of rally and unite together. Sure, there will be some competition, right? There will be competition as to who's going to finish on top of each other. Who's going to get some of the newest, the most new members for the entire campaign? But who's going to get that top dollar slot? And really probably get the best, best room down at the Caribbean vacation that we're all going to enjoy together. It'll be an awesome networking thing. But I do want to invite you again to come to one of those sessions, where we kind of break down how this membership campaign drives. To get you thinking, we want to find brand-new ESA members or associate members. So an associate member or an integrator member. Those are what are going to be the open categories for us to be able to welcome new folks to.
And we'll hold these trainings in November, December, and January. In the training, we'll talk about ESA, we'll talk about the benefits, and we'll talk about how our members are utilizing them to better their business each and every day. I will bring in some of my staff members, Jessica DeCosta and Kaylee Barasso, on the associate member side, to talk about how vendors and service providers are leveraging membership to gain access to all of the integrators that we have here in the ESA community. And then we'll also talk to Sofia and LaShawna DeJesus, who lead our ESA membership team in terms of new membership. And they can talk to you about how they sell membership, some of the prospects that they're talking to. So you'll really team with an ESA staff member throughout the campaign to make it truly successful, and to really get you engaged with ESA.
I think the other thing, when you talk about teams, you may be from the same company, and a few of you work together to get some of the new members on board, and you can kind of put some of the, the credit together to be able to earn different prizes or earn your way onto that trip. So it's going to be a fun, collaborative, energized gathering. I think Jillian touched on something earlier, too, that sometimes when an associate from ESA is calling on a company to become a member of ESA, it's different than if you, as a volunteer, are talking to another peer within the industry, and you're able to share, what are some of the values and the things that you get out of ESA membership? Whether it's the insurance side, whether it's NTS training side, whether it's the EMP group, the whole list of value of what you bring. Sometimes they're going to hear differently from you to give ESA an option of consideration.
Absolutely, John. You know, 75 years, as I said, is a big marker, and we want to break some records here. So we're looking for the right volunteers that are going to partner with ESA staff members, really get involved and tell their story. ESA benefits talk for themselves, but when people tell the stories of how it's benefiting their business each and every day, it goes a long way. So we're absolutely excited for the campaign. Thank you for bringing it to us, John.
So record-setting year ahead, folks. Look for new integrators, new associate members, new advertising. Those are the main three ways. So campaign's open today, let's get you started, let's get you involved and engaged. Hey, all the past presidents out there in BFAA, I'd love to see you guys reengage and say, hey, you know what, we as a past president's group, let's see how many members we collectively could bring in. So again, fun challenges that are going to happen, and competition between each and every one of us. So let's be clear, I need you to be a volunteer for the ESA membership campaign. Join us today.
ESA members are some of the most successful and fast-growing dealers, integrators, and monitoring companies in the industry. We are the SDM 100. We are the fastest 50. We are the largest industry titans, and we are the family-owned businesses from throughout the nation. We employ over 500,000 industry professionals and serve more than 34 million residential and commercial clients. We are ESA, and we are the voice of electronic security and life safety.
Hello, everyone. I'm George DiMarco. I'm really thrilled and honored to be included in this ESA Town Hall meeting. I'd like to give a big shout-out to John Loud and the ESA team for putting this together. You know, my part in all this is to feature ESX 2023, which honestly is easy for me, since I've been involved with ESX since its beginning. You know, I'm constantly surprised at the amount of people I run into who have never heard of the Electronic Security Expo. This diamond in the rough is a personal and intimate event that connects security professionals from integration and dealer companies, much like yourself, from across North America. At ESX, you're going to have the opportunity to connect with like-minded peers, learn from business and industry thought leaders, and of course, discover emerging trends and technologies. We're going to be sharing best practices on how to attract and retain a quality workforce, which I know is on top of everybody's list. You know, ideas on best ways to develop and coach your rising leaders, understand the status of existing markets, and of course, explore emerging opportunities, too. We're going to have a special focus on building and maintaining your recurring revenue. We're going to be giving out a lot of information and ideas that will help make your business more successful. You know, from the beginning, our vision has been to bring together industry professionals who are passionate about the business of security. And our goal has been to inspire attendees to, to take meaningful action in their business or personal life, and of course, have a little fun along the way. Talk about fun. Next year, we're holding the event in the Kentucky Convention Center in Louisville. And for those of you that love bourbon, and I know there's a few of you out there that do, Louisville is home to the world's only urban bourbon experience. And just when you thought John Loud couldn't get any louder. We also have our networking events, like the PubCrawl. It's super fun, and it's a great way to make new business connections, or even reconnect with old friends. The expo floor is where many quality business conversations happen. Our exhibitors and sponsors are ready to have conversation with you to help you understand future opportunities. From growing top-line revenue and RMR to increasing your bottom-line profits, the expo floor is going to be the place to be. So if you're a first-timer, I really encourage you to get plugged into ESX and find out why these folks are so passionate about it. Registration is now open at ESXweb.com. This is where you can choose the ESX experience that works for you and your team. The website provides all the details for each past type, from executive to expo only. So join us for ESX, where we're going to help you grow your business, and you can learn how to keep the revenue coming. Thanks for listening. We're looking forward to seeing you in Louisville. Take care.
All right, welcome back, folks, and I hope that you have already sent in your renewal for your ESA membership. And a huge thanks out to George DiMarco, as look forward to reminding you, you have discounts right now when you go do that renewal. So the early bird registration's open for ESX. Look forward to seeing you up in Louisville, Kentucky here soon. But you know, one of the most vital things that's about a, a strong organization is the finances. And I am absolutely proud, as Chairman of ESA, to tell you, while I've served on the board throughout the years and part of the Finance Committee, how strong the ESA financials have been. So first, a huge congratulations, Merlin, our Chief Executive Officer, our Executive Director to oversee the staff, and congratulations on running such a strong organization, amazing team and staff that you've got. So congrats on.
Thank you, John. Thank you. I'm very proud of the team that we have in place. And you should be, too, because they work hard every day for this incredible industry that we have a pleasure serving in. And I think really, it's probably most important for you to hear directly from our treasurer. So here we have Kevin Stone from New York to give you our financial update. Kevin?
Thanks, John and Merlin. It's great to be here today. I'm Kevin Stone, Treasurer of ESA, and I'm also Chairman of the Finance Committee. It's my pleasure to be here and report on the finances of ESA. I'm, I'm just very happy to be here today. So first thing I'd like to talk about is our Finance Committee. We've got a very robust committee made up of some, some big, big-time industry veterans. And you know, the staff is represented by both Merlin and Susan Edgley, and we're happy to have them on there. Then we have John Loud, President of Loud Security, and the Chairman of ESA. We also have Brian Duffy from Permar Security, Jennifer Holloway from CIBC. We've got Jamie Voss from Security Solutions, and also the immediate past Chair of ESA. So you can see, we've got a very talented team that are guiding the finances of this great organization. I oftentimes get asked, you know, where does our money go? What do we do with our money? I'd like to expand on that just a little bit, and, and share some information with, with the audience here. You know, 30% of our operating budget goes to training, and I believe we have the best training program in the country. National Training School does a tremendous job with both training and certifications, a lot of certificates. We trained nearly 7,000 people last year, and it's, it's just really impressive. And the amount of training that's done through our organization is really incredible. And I think it's one of the biggest benefits that we bring our members. We also put 25% of our budget into what's member services, which is a lot of different things that we do to take care of our membership, and make sure that there's good resources available to them, so that we can further the industry and make the industry as strong as possible. Because a stronger industry makes for stronger companies, and that's really a big part of our goal. And we put a lot of resources into that. We put a lot of resources into advocacy, education. And then I'd say also, it's very important for us to facilitate making connections amongst members. So we do a lot, and we pour a lot of resources into that. We also put about 20% of our operating budget into events. And the event that I'd like to talk about, the biggest event that we do, is also what I believe is the best trade show in the whole industry, which is ESX. Takes place once a year. It gets tremendous response from not only individuals, but vendors. There's a lot of fantastic networking that goes on there. And again, back to connections, there's some really solid connections that are made at that show. It's, it's a tremendous asset to the whole industry. And if you haven't attended in the past, I'd suggest that you sign up for it next year. It's going to be in Louisville, and there's plenty of detail on our website. It'd be great to, to meet you if you haven't been in the past, or even if you have. And it's just, it's a great networking event, and I look forward to seeing everybody there. On top of that, we put some money into public relations, and some money into advocacy. And both are very important. And again, from our perspective, ESA is all about bringing this industry together, making it stronger, and benefiting all the member companies. So with that said, I'll hand it back over to you, Merlin and John. Thank you.
ESA's newest Committee to Leadership Identification and Nominating Committee, or LINK, was introduced in 2021 to bring a diverse, fresh expertise to the industry's leading association. This committee's mission is to seek out young, diverse, and driven leaders in the electronic security and life safety industry to secure ESA's strong future. To elaborate on this committee, LINK Chairman Kirk McDowell in Oregon.
It's a pleasure to be here at our town hall meeting. So LINK was a committee that was formed in 2021 and it was formed to help the association ESA look for new talent and develop new talent into the leadership roles within ESA. But it goes one step further than that is that we are also responsible to help our officers of ESA and our committee chair people look for new talent and people to enter into different committees within ESA. LINK is important because what we do and our mission is to really go out and seek and identify new members and/or new people that have not given back to the industry that may have wanted to for some time. I'll give you an example. This weekend, I received a phone call on Sunday from a friend of mine. Let me call him Bob. His name's not Bob, but let me call him Bob. Bob said, Kirk, I've been in the industry for 18, 15 to 18 years. He goes, I've done a good job with my company. This person's pretty high up in his company. And he said, I brought people into ESA. I go talk to people about ESA all the time, but I've really never volunteered for anything in ESA. How do I get involved? That is exactly the type of person that we, we want calling me, right? But they can also call our committee. Our committee is, is made up of some really, really great people. It's Mark Kellenberg from DMP. We have Ann Ferguson from alarm.com, Joe Colosimo from Home Pro, John Loud, of course, our, our chairman, Stu Forsheimer from HS Technology and Kelly Bond from Davis Group Mergers and Acquisitions. So what we do is we talk to people that are interested in either serving on committees and/or would like to be an officer of ESA. And we help them and mentor them to get to where they want to be within the organization. So that's what LINK does. Now, how do they get involved? They call any one of the people that I just mentioned, or feel free to reach out to me at any time. And that's kirk.mcdowell@macguard, M A C G U A R D dot com. Or get in contact with any member of ESA staff and they will direct you to a LINK member. And in closing, the relevancy of LINK to me is vitally important. Because what we're doing is we are helping three to four to five years from now, plan our next leadership of ESA. And to me, that's really important. So we look forward to working with you. Please let us know and we'll be happy to help in any way we can getting involved in ESA in a leadership role. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kirk. And thank you for your leadership and the entire committee's work with LINK, helping us to identify committee members and future board of director positions. Look, we're about to take a quick break here, but I want to remind you, we've got Mike Barnes with Barnes and Associates coming up with our state of the industry update. And just prior to that, you're going to hear from Michelle with ESA talking about the NTS updates. So stay tuned. We'll be right back. Hey, security pros, welcome back. Joining me now is Michelle Youngblood, who is our chief knowledge officer and oversees the National Training School. Welcome, Michelle.
Thanks Merlin. Thanks for having me.
It's great to have you here. So I'm excited to talk training and I have a couple of questions for you. So I'd like to start out with, what training is popular amongst our members and non-members?
I have to say, you know, our certified alarm technician level one is usually always our most popular. It, it's, it's our history. It's our foundation of where we came from and where, why we are where we are today with the training program. However, what's really emerging lately is our certified alarm technician, fire alarm technician program. It's called CFAT for short. And that has really taken off in the last two years, I have to say, where we have more and more unique new fire companies coming to us and looking for diversified fire training. That is something that also is code compliant, standard compliant, and is something in the new techniques and technologies you see out there within their buildings and their homes that they're installing these systems. And we are very proud of that program and I'm so happy to see that people are noticing it and taking advantage of it. The great thing also about our CFAT program is that we have, it's an alternative to NISAT. So those folks that, you know, looked at the NISAT program and pathway and found it very challenging or restricting in some aspects, we have a program that is right for you and is a great opportunity. The other great popular program we have that is, is very new to us, it's our Training as a Service program. We call it TOS for short, you know, picked up on that service component. But Training as a Service is highly customizable. That's really what it's about. It's a customized onboarding, pathway training for any company to look at. And when they're bringing on a new person or they're looking, they have a star player and they're like, we need you to, you know, continue your growth. We want to invest in you. This program allows any company to look at a whole host of topics, whether it's fire, it's intrusion, it's sales, it's, it's job safety. It is soft skills such as communication skills and how to be, you know, a really contributing member of a team. All those topics can get chosen and customized into a perfect package. And I have to say, we have so many companies knocking on our door about this program because it really is not just cookie cutter. It's completely customizable. So great programs.
So exciting. Lots of, lots of new and exciting things happening at NTS. So, you know, we pride ourselves and, and with our training program. And, and but we're, we're not, it doesn't fall short on us that there's competition out there. What's the difference between ESA's training and the competition?
I, I really do. I love this question because it gives us a chance to kind of compare ourselves to what's out there in the market. And I'm very proud to say, one of the biggest things that differentiates us from the competition is actually that. It's our differentiator. It's the variety of what we have to offer. Our catalog of courses is so deep now. Meaning we have, like I said before, we have intrusion, if that's what your, your focus is, is intrusion. We have access control. We have video training. We have, as I already mentioned, extensive fire training. And then from there, we go into networking, internet protocol. We also do a lot of job safety training. We have a, we're, we partner with a certified OSHA provider. And then like I mentioned, we also have the soft skills. And so the depth of what we have is a one stop shop for most companies. They don't have to go, you know, here for their video training, here for their access, here for their sales. They can come to us and do everything. In addition, the variety of how we deliver it. So online, so you know, don't pull your people out of the field. They can do it, you know, asynchronously. So when they want, we also have it virtual. So if they want to have that, that instructor available, they're there and we can, we can also do that. And then additionally continuing education. So this ongoing continuing education, professional growth is what makes our industry stand above and keeps us with, on the cutting edge. And that's we have continued education, little chunks of classes and specialized topics that deep dive into something very specific that you need your technicians to get, improve their skills on. So yeah, we have, the, the variety is, is a big part of what we, why we stand out. The other thing that's kind of, I'm really passionate about and, and I get, you know, hopefully I don't talk too long about this, but is our instructors. That, you know, since I've been with ESA, we've really, we've always had great instructor base. But we have over 80 plus instructors that are who, they're what makes up ESA, the training program to what it is today. Without them, we couldn't do what we do. And unlike some of our competitors where they only have one or two subject matter experts, ESA has 80 plus subject matter experts to choose, to pull from. And that really gives us a credible, well researched, top of the line education program. It's those instructors.
Yeah. So true. Just another example of how volunteers really make a difference within our community at ESA. So, you know, these courses in our industry, right, is driven by codes and standards. And these things are constantly changing. How does ESA keep up with those changes? And what courses have recently been updated that our viewers might be interested in?
Sure. Yeah. So that is something, you know, we have a, a team on, on our staff that, that they're dedicated to doing those course updates. But they don't work independently, right? So I mentioned those 80 plus instructors. We put together a task force, it's called. It's a subject matter expert task force to do all of our course updates and revisions and rewrites. So that is how we, we do this. And so the most recent update is our fire alarm installation methods class. So that's a mouthful. But that class is obviously very code driven NFPA 72, a lot of ICC code. So we have to really spend a lot of time with those subject matter experts to ensure those codes are up to date. And, and, and they also, that same group also did our professional fire alarm design class. And they did the code update for that. Currently, we have three task forces working right now on our certified alarm technician level one class. That is a major rewrite they're doing. It is a big project. It should be released, we hope in six months. And then understanding electronic security systems, that's our fundamental class. So anybody who, it's a great class for HJs, to be honest with you. But that class is be, is just finished updating with new technology being included. And then finally is our video systems technology class. That committee is, is just kicked off, looking at to doing some great things. So within six months, we'll have three new classes out there of, of updates.
That's fantastic. I can remember taking level one in 1989. So I would imagine it's changed quite a bit since then.
Uh, yes, quite a bit. Yeah, quite a bit.
Fantastic. Look, if you can't tell, we're passionate about training. We would invite you to visit courses.esaweb.org where you can learn a whole lot more about the vast variety of inventory we have available of courses and continuing education that we can deliver to you either online, in person, or through a virtual format. Michelle, thank you so much for your time today. You did a fantastic job. Right after the break, we're going to pick it up with Michael Barnes in Missouri, an industry update that you don't want to miss.
2022 is shaping up to be a good year for the security alarm industry. I'm going to cover real briefly in this report on industry growth. I'm going to talk a little bit about the structure of the industry and indication of changes. I'm going to discuss the performance metrics of security alarm companies and how they're changing this year or what we're seeing. I'll then switch to discussing a couple of threats as well, which I know are on everybody's mind and kind of clone out, close out with a quick update on market values. So on the first slide here, what you'll see is a 20 year view of the industry's revenues. And what's good about it and what you'll see off to the right is that the industry's rebounded nicely off of COVID. We're back into growth. 2021 was up about 5% in terms of total revenue. And we're projecting an increasing year for 2022 as well. Probably total revenues up about 6%. With that segmented between installation revenues moving up about 7% and the underlying recurring monitoring and service revenues moving up about 4%. All in all, a very nice rebound off of where we came during COVID. I thought I'd put the 20 year chart in there to give everybody a little bit broader context. I mean, if you'll remember back in the Great Recession, we actually had industry revenues shrink a little bit as we did in COVID. But the thing you want to take note of, which is one of the great attributes of this industry is that even when industry revenue shrank, it was because the sales and installation activity had declined, not the recurring revenues. In fact, even at the lower installation revenue levels, like back during the Great Recession or during COVID, it was more than enough activity to replace industry attrition. And actually, industry recurring revenues grew even through the Great Recession and through COVID. Something very, very powerful dynamic about the industry and why it's such a great place to be. And we'll see that trend continue in 2022. We'll talk a little bit about changes in the structure of the industry. This is basically a pie chart showing market share by RMR segmented across a couple of different buckets that A, driven mostly by where we can get good, good data, but B, also give you a sense for kind of how things are changing in the industry. As you'll quickly note here, the national players have about a 42% market share, followed by smaller local companies, of which there are thousands of them, most of them ESA members, thankfully, about having about a 30% share. Then also the larger regional players weighing in with about 12%. As we all know, there's been special segments of the industry like DIY, PERS and other segments that also now are fairly meaningful pieces of the overall pie. What I want to do though is to take the same color coding and the same kind of segmentation. And on the next slide here, I'll show you how this has changed over about the last 10 year period. And what you'll see, as one might expect, is that the local players and the regional players have lost share. That is the, between the national players and these new specialty market segments, which are growing faster than the industry rate, they're taking additional share. Now, what that doesn't mean is that local players aren't still competitive. The reality is they are. And very, and many of them are very, very good. But a lot of companies are having a tough time adapting to kind of new technologies and the rate of change, which I'll discuss here in a few minutes. And generally speaking, the number of players and their share has declined. So we see back, for instance, in 2011, collective market share between regional, traditional regional and local players of about a 53% share. You move forward 10 years and you're seeing it drop to about 42%. We're likely to see that trend continue. But when people talk about industry consolidation, we think it's generally at this rate. It's not as if we're going to wake up 10 years from now, in our opinion at least, and see this to where, you know, the national players, for instance, have, you know, more than 60, 70% of the market and it's really kind of consolidated up. We still think it favors capability and local presence, not necessarily scale. On the next slide, we'll talk about how everybody's doing in terms of performance metrics. Because obviously with good industry opportunity, resurgence in growth, you know, it still boils down to, is this a good business to be in and can you create economic value for your company and your shareholders? And we follow the top three metrics. First one is the cost to originate customers or RMR. Maybe stepping back before I get into these and just describe the dynamic. I know all of you know this, but a quick refresher. The way it works in the alarm industry, generally speaking, is on a fully burden basis. That means all sales and installation costs, all marketing spend, all of the GNA that supports that activity, generally you lose money on originating the new customer. But that's a great investment because the high margin recurring revenues over the many years, you can keep that relationship more than give you that investment back and, and a very strong return. Plus of course, those accounts can trade in the open market and you can monetize that investment at any time you want, basically. So the three variables that kind of determine whether this is a good place to be is what does it cost you to originate a customer or a dollar of RMR? What kind of margins are you going to make on the ongoing revenues, once you get them? And what are your attrition rates? That is, how long do you get to keep them? So in tracking that in 2022, we see a little bit of mixed results on average. The good news is, is the cost to originate new customers is improving. We've seen that moving up. I think 2022 will close out with that being a strong metric. And that's primarily driven because security alarm companies seem to have upped their prices and become more choosy during COVID. What we need to make sure is that everybody hangs on to that, right? Don't, don't give it back up. The competitive environment, a lot of times takes those increases back, but we need to hang on to that. And again, the good news is in the near term, that's improving. Kind of the somewhat bad news is that the margin on RMR and ongoing revenues is kind of mixed. We see a lot of players continuing to lose margin on it. That is, they're gaining more recurring revenues. They're offering more services, but they're not making the same kind of margin on it. And that kind of flies in the face of what most people expect about the industry. And that is that as the industry gets bigger, consolidation occurs and things of that nature, that we would see these margins improving. But the reality is they have been slipping for most. Now that's not true in all segments of the market and why I indicated it as mixed. But particularly if you look at this metric and, and in, I also say mixed because in 2022, we're seeing actually a slight flattening or improvement in that. But it's still part of a longer term trend where margins have been declining and something everybody wants to keep an eye on. Last but not least, the really good news is attrition rates are flat. I mean, this is the one that freaks everybody out, right? We went into COVID and the thought was, oh no, we're going to start losing customers. This is going to be a problem. And then exactly the opposite occurred. People hunkered down. They kept their security. It was more important than ever. Commercial companies were trying to upgrade their systems in their, in their buildings to accommodate the new, the new paradigm. And so lots of business, lots of stickiness, and we're seeing continued flatness in terms of attrition rates. And actually for some of the players, And actually, for some of the players, they're improving. Again, want to just step back, I put that footnote at the bottom of that slide about cautionary notes. In the broader context, keep an eye on margins. And the one bad news, if there is in that attrition rate thing, maybe not unexpected, is we're seeing moving activity go back up. That's not surprising, right? If the economy gets fully back open and things happen, people start to change locations and things of that nature, both on commercial and residential. So we're likely to see some pressure on attrition rates towards the end of 2022, maybe into 2023. On the next slide, let's start talking about the threats though. And these are the ones that everybody deals with. I'll tick through three of them, there's a bunch more, but these are the ones that I think are on everybody's mind. If there is a good news in this, it's a tide that's raising all ships or maybe lowering them all, depending on how you view the analogy. But that is, is that it's not any one player in the industry that's experiencing these threats. It's as true for ADT as it is for a small local player in a small market. The first one is labor and supply chain issues. Duh, everybody's got that, right? Hiring's difficult, product delays, hard to figure out how to get everything done, and obviously continued uncertainties. So this, this sense of like, geez, I have a lot of opportunity here, but I'm not sure I can deliver. That's kind of the threat in there. And so we've kind of moved the threat meter on that up into the red. The next one, inflation and pricing. Boy, this is a big one, right? It affects everybody. We're seeing generally, when we look at those performance metrics and we look under the hood, we see, we see cost increases hitting just about everywhere. It's sales and installation side, monitoring, field service, everything is feeling the pressures on inflation. And that's a real problem. It's a real problem for all of you in two places. One, you've got your entire embedded existing customer base. I know it's tough to go out and raise their prices, but believe me, they're all feeling it from everybody else. You need to get on board because underneath your costs are increasing and that's going to put further pressure on that margin we talked about earlier. The second thing is, is how do you figure it into your pricing on new systems? Because there you have two different levers, right? Do I increase the upfront charge I want? Or do I try to increase the ongoing recurring revenues? The reality is you got to figure out that right mix, but you got to make decisions and you got to lean and then do it. Believe me, your competition will be doing it and you need to as well. On the next slide, what we'll see is kind of the last one. And this is the big one, kind of amorphous and hard to describe. But to me, it's the one that's affecting everybody the most. And that is just an overall increase in operating complexity. All across the operations, everything is more difficult. Hiring, training, deploying, ensuring, tracking, raising capital, you name it. It's all more complex and more difficult than it was. In addition to that, the rate of change is much faster. I mean, COVID was a great example, right? Kind of shook everybody, woke them back up and said, hey, you have to be resilient, you have to be flexible, you have to be action oriented and you need to make decisions and move on. So we need to see the quality of management sophistication increase. Again, all of you watching it, good news, you're a member of ESA, lots of training materials, lots of things that you can get together with other people in the industry to help solve these problems. Lastly, let's shift to market values and what's going on. The good news is, if you stay in the business and you handle those metrics right and you participate in this great kind of additional opportunity that we're seeing everywhere, residential segment, commercial segment, lots of opportunity, lots of growth occurring across all of those market segments. If you do that, you'll be rewarded, at least in the near term, if you seek to either raise capital on the value of the company or if you seek to sell it. We're seeing market values move up rather substantially. This particular chart gives you kind of a five year view. The bubbles, by the way, are scaled to the size of the RMR associated with a transaction. That's how we're tracking it. And here we're showing you a narrow segment of transactions, not that narrow, it's actually pretty broad, between transactions involving 100,000 of RMR up to 10 million of RMR. And the bubbles are scaled that way. And it shows you five years over time how the market's moving. If you sit and you look at this, you can clearly see very quickly that the bubbles where they're landing on this as a multiple of RMR are moving up. Yeah, most recently and doing so pretty decidedly. You can also tell by the color of bubbles who's doing the buying. The red bubbles are where it's a new entrant, it's a new player in the industry, say a private equity fund looking to buy a platform in the industry. Or if it's a blue bubble, it's another alarm company buying, you know, somebody else in the business, a consolidation play, if you will. And what you'll see here is, is as we extend this out into 2022, we're still gathering this data. We should have it ready for our annual conference in February. Would love to have everybody come, Barnes Buchanan Conference, February, down in Florida. When we, when we finish up doing this, you're going to see a good mix of blue and red bubbles and you're going to see a decided upward trend. The next slide is the same one as this, but we take off the scaling. So now all the bubbles are the same size, you can just look at individual transactions. And there you can see that kind of distinct upward movement. This is the pressure in the market, there's a lot of capital, there's a high number of buyers out in the market that are very motivated. A lot of them are trying to buy because they need people and they need capability. It's a good way to address issues. And so I, we anticipate we'll continue to see that pressure. One cautionary note, while market values are up, and you generally will see that in this slice of the market, which is a good bellwether, by the way, it's a good place to look because this size transactions tend to tell you what direction the market's moving in. The very big transactions like Stanley's sale to Securitas, you know, those, those operate in a different world and aren't governed by the same forces that most of the market trades in. But the point I want to make is that you'll see as we finish out this out in 2022, is there's going to be a wider spread between the high end of valuations being paid and the lower end. So while it is raising all ships, if you will, market values generally are up. The market's becoming a little bit more discriminating or possibly a little bit more punishing. You know, if you have a, a company that's not growing, the attrition rate's moving up, you're not well documented, you can't articulate how well the business is doing, you're going to get punished in this market even though values are up. But if you're a good performer and you're well documented, good time to think about potentially selling, right? The last thing I guess we'll look at that kind of reinforces that upward market is we can look at two other things and that's the public stocks of ADT and Vivint, basically over about a two year period. And as you can see off to the right, their market values moved up. Now, why is that? It's a general appreciation for the fact as you head into economic uncertainty that the security alarm industry is a great place to be. You know, high recurring revenues, sticking, COVID showed that when things are scary or tough and people are hunkering down, what do they care about? They care about their security. That's both in the commercial market segments and in the residential segments. What's great about ADT, this is a completely different ADT, right? This is not your grandfather's ADT. They've really upped their game, they've become much better in the business. They've broadened into commercial and not just residential, they actually got into solar business as well. It's kind of mixed, we'll see where that comes out. But the biggest thing you want to step back and look at them is to understand that they now have two very critical shareholders, Google and State Farm. Now, think about that, right? That is one powerful combination. So we need to keep an eye on what ADT is doing. In our view, it doesn't at this time change the competitive landscape all that much, but we need to keep our eye on it because that is a very powerful combination. What we hope ADT does is attract investor interest to the space, appreciation for what a great industry it is. And of course, that filters down to the benefit of all of you. The last slide we can look at is the next one, which is Vivint's stock. And again, you'll similarly, you'll see them up, both ADT and Vivint are showing really strong growth. Vivint continues to amaze everybody with its ability to, to keep growing at a rate that's, you know, roughly twice that of the industry, which is just amazing, given how big they're doing. So again, good signs overall about the industry. So that's basically my wrap up on the industry overview. I'd love to hear from you if you have any questions, you want copies of the slides. Drop me a note, my email address is m barnes@barnesassociates.com. We'll look forward to seeing you at ESX. So back to you, Merlin.
Thank you, Michael. Thanks for all the enlightening updates that we've got to look forward to for the end of 22 and getting prepared into 2023. Huge thanks to all of our contributors today for our town hall. Thank you for your dedication to ESA and to our industry and what you do for your communities and your companies by participating with us today, so greatly appreciated. At this time, I'd also like to thank our Board of Directors. Kevin Stone of Doyle Security in New York, Rick Seymour of Guardian Hawk Security in Florida, Melissa Brinkman of Custom Alarm in Minnesota, Jeremy Bates of Bates Security in Kentucky, Doug Bassett of Comcast Xfinity Home in Florida, Jason Lutz of Residio in Tennessee, Steve Firestone of Firestone Strategies in South Carolina, Michael Barnes of Barnes and Associates in Missouri, and Jamie Voss of Security Solutions Northwest in Washington. And I'd also like to thank John Loud, Chairman of ESA, President of Loud Security Systems in Atlanta, Georgia, for his passion and dedication to our industry and association. Additionally, we need to thank our executive strategic partners for their support throughout 2022. Without their support, we could not accomplish the mission of the association. A special thank you goes out to Residio for their diamond partnership. We appreciate your support and look forward to the continued partnership.
Pro Series from Residio, an innovative security platform that brings it all together to help you win more customers, keep them longer and drive profits. Pro Series brings together security, life safety and smart control in a fully encrypted, two-way wireless end-to-end solution. A single powerful platform to serve your residential and small to medium sized commercial customers. Pro Series brings it all together with a clean and intuitive user interface that is easy to learn with customized spoken zone descriptors.
Fault, John's bedroom window.
And with a scan of a QR code, easy access to self-help videos. Pro Series works with Google Assistant and has Alexa built in.
Alexa, what time is it?
The time is 2:00 PM.
And with important life safety capabilities, like one-go-all-go, when a single life safety sensor sounds, all of them sound, spreading audible and visual evacuation warnings throughout the premises. Pro Series brings it all together. Its highly flexible modular design makes it easy to deliver a system that is just right. Setup is quick and efficient through easy local programming or through convenient remote programming with AlarmNet 360. After installation, maintain your accounts easily and with fewer truck rolls thanks to remote system diagnostics and over the air updates. You can also protect your accounts from takeover by locking sensors to the Pro Series control panel and even help build and reinforce your own brand with end users. Designed by professionals for professionals. Together, we help protect what matters most. Pro Series from Residio.
What an absolute honor to be part of today's town hall gathering. Hope each and every one of the listeners out there found new ways to maybe get involved with ESA or heard some new ideas you should go check out. Look at this list of different committees that we have before you right now. And I'd love to see if any of those resonate with you. Remember, we have a seat at the table, we want to have you get involved and get engaged with ESA. Remember, I also would like to invite you to become a member of the membership campaign so we can have a great celebration next year at the Caribbean Island. But between now and then, I look forward to seeing you at ESX in Louisville, Kentucky, June 2023.